Hello, good evening and welcome to our forum here tonight at which we will hear from candidates for Niklet County's County Commissioner for Districts 1, 3, and 5. My name is Lynn Solo and I will be your moderator this evening. Assisting me is Pat Kahn and she's to my left. It will be her job to keep me on task. And also assisting as timers, we have Virginia, Victoria Steinhaus and Mary Ann Scharf off to my right. We are all members of the League of Women Voters of St. Peter. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer group that promotes active and informed involvement of citizens in government. We are proud to present this forum with co-hosts, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce and the St. Peter Herald. We will ask questions of the candidates submitted from the public and from our co-hosts. All questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. All candidates have been invited. Running for District 1 is Marie Drantle and running for District 3, Denny Kemp, and for District 5, Bruce Beatty. We are going to start with opening statements in which candidates will have two minutes to tell us why they are running for Commissioner and what unique qualities, skills, or experience they would bring to the board. Timers will hold up signs indicating when 15 seconds are left and a different sign, a stop sign, when time has run out. We're going to start with Marie Drantle from District 1, then go to Denny Kemp, District 3, and Bruce Beatty from District 5. So Marie, it's all yours.
Thanks Lynn. My name is Marie Drantle. I am the incumbent Commissioner from District 1. I was first elected in 2010 and I am finishing up my 10th year. I've said this multiple times over the last 10 years, with county government, you learn something new every day. I continue to learn and I think we continue to grow in this position. In my professional life, I'm a certified public accountant here in St. Peter. I have my own practice and I've been in practice since 1994. I'm a retired vendor from the St. Peter Farmers Market. I ran out of time to garden. I am the fourth generation of my family to own and live on the family farm. I'm a graduate of St. Peter High School, Mankato State University. I enjoy county government. I enjoy serving the people of Niklet County and I want to keep serving and do the best for our residents. I think we live in a unique area of the world and I refer to it as God's country and we need to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Denny Kemp, you're next.
Thank you Lynn. My name is Denny Kemp. I live in North Mankato. I am just completing my first term as Commissioner for Niklet County. My background is kind of a mixed bag, other than the extent that I have always worked in public service. I started out my public service career as a police officer and spent doing, spent 20 years doing that, then migrated into technology, which was my original passion, and continued to do that. I also have been an adjunct faculty member at South Central Technical, or South Central College now. It started out at MAVTI way back when, for those who remember that. And I've taught in the emergency medical services in that department for 38 years. So again, I like Marie, enjoy what I do. I have a passion for what we're doing in the county. I have a passion to help and also to do the things that make the quality of life here as best we possibly can and be mindful of the health and safety of all our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And for District 5, Bruce Beatty.
Thank you Lynn. Once again, thank you to the League for putting this on tonight and the Chamber and the Herald. It is something that I think is really good to do, especially kind of with the kind of up and down political cycle that we're in right now. So I think it's really important for that. I obviously live in the 5th District, which goes way west in Niklet County. I live right across from New Ulm. So that's as far out and that's not even the end of the county. It goes farther than that. I am running, it's just too simple to say, public service, but I am definitely interested in public service. I did spend 10 years on the county board already. I think one of the biggest things that brought me back to running again is I was getting so much encouragement, not just from people within the 5th District, but also people in all of Niklet County. You know, they wanted me back on the ballot and, and so here I am. I definitely have a willingness to serve in government, whether it's at whatever level at this point. That is my interest at this point. As far as my resume, I have a pretty extensive resume that I won't go into just too much. I'm a retired veterinarian, so obviously I have a very strong and extensive educational background to get to that point. And that was the type of training that would lead me to be a really good critical thinker and a decision maker, learning more how to listen. Oh my goodness, 15 seconds already. I think that happened four years ago, didn't it? Something like that. Anyhow, I'll cut it short. I have a previous tenure on the county board, numerous different committees. I have a lot of experience and I really want to get back on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's time to get started with questions and we're going to go the same order again for this question, but then after that we'll kind of mix things up. The first question concerns farms and we'll start with Marie Drantle. "In what ways can the county help support the farmers and agriculture in the current situation we find ourselves in?"
One other way we can support is to manage our budget and our levy prudently. Every dollar that is spent in Niklet County either comes from a reimbursement from federal, state, or is levied against our residents and their property taxes. So if we can keep our budget down and leverage other dollars, we can keep our real estate taxes down. What we were told this morning, we have a 17% drop in market value in farmland in Niklet County for 2021, so our farm real estate taxes are going to drop. Besides keeping our real estate taxes low, we need communication, so we need broadband, we need roads to travel on, we need management of our drainage systems, we need involvement with our partners in our drainage system, so DNR and federal waters. We need to make it easier for them to do their job every day and that's feeding the rest of the world. And that's hard to do when you don't have support at all levels of government, whether it be county, federal, or state. But transportation and broadband are going to be a big one in the future and we're working toward that.
Thank you. Denny Kemp.
I'm one of the two Commissioners in the county that don't represent any rural components. I represent, all of my district involves the corporate limits of the city of North Mankato. But I'm also keenly aware of the needs of all of us to be able to do, as Marie has indicated, transit. Broadband is a huge issue, certainly with COVID. We're certainly more keenly aware of our needs for broadband, for doing telecommuting in all levels, which becomes a huge issue. Financially, it's again, one of the more common comments I get from some of my constituents is, "We should run government like a business." Unfortunately, business also has a profit component and I don't see our role as Commissioners in doing that. What we're trying to do is provide the required services that are required by some other unit of government for us to provide to our citizens. So we have to do that in the most economical way and as Marie indicated, only about 51% of our levy dollars, which are, I should say, 51% of our total budget, are levy dollars. The rest of them are dollars that come from somewhere else, some other, in most cases, unit of government. So it's being keenly aware of that and talking about the leveraging. I think a good example of the working together and leveraging those things was the commitment that Niklet County made to complete the 4-lane highway to New Ulm. For those of us that traveled further off to the east, it was a long time that we were driving on two lanes of road in those little gaps. And so this is, I think, an opportunity to, and Niklet County committed to making those resources available to do that. Thank you.
And Bruce Beatty.
Well, these two covered a lot of things that I might have said too, but that's just fine. But I might go on just a little bit different, different way. Obviously, what's happening in agriculture right now is we are seeing the swing where ag land values are going down at some point, which means they are going to be paying lesser taxes. But then it also swings that residential homes are going to probably go up in market value and they're going to carry a little bit more of the weight. This is nothing new. This has happened in cycles over the years also. That is one thing that is going to happen. Broadband is, is pretty important and it's been talked about a long time. There are some pluses and minuses with broadband. Some of it has to do with the cost of putting it in and a lot of people question, well, how long is it going to be the one we use or are we all going to be going off of satellites? So there's, that's a big discussion. I do want to touch a little bit on ditches and water. If anybody like Marie and I, we had to deal for many years with our ditch systems out there in agriculture. Our ditch systems are old, okay, and a lot of water runs into them. And as we know, Governor Dayton went ahead and said we had to put buffer strips in. Most counties were already in the process of doing that because we were doing redetermination of benefits on ditches and then it was a requirement to put in a buffer. Now I think what's interesting is years ago, I used to serve on the Minnesota River Board and they didn't talk about flow rate back then, but now all of a sudden that's getting to be a hot item. It's not just the amount of water that goes through a ditch, it's how fast it gets out of the ditch and down into the river. And that's where so much of the sediment is going. So I think a big thing coming up is we're going to have to start dealing with, how do we hold some of the water back? And that's not just something that the county and farmers have to pay for. That should be something that goes statewide. That's a taxpayer thing to preserve our river. I did it again, didn't I?
Okay. Thank you. And staying with farming and, let me think here. It's Ms. Drantle and then Mr. Kemp and Mr. Beatty again. Did I get that right? Question number two. Told you she had to keep me on task here. We'll, we'll start with Mr. Kemp and then Ms. Drantle and Mr. Beatty. Oh, you need to know the question.
Question, yes, thank you.
Okay. "A recent article in the Minneapolis Star Tribune extolled the virtues of Kernza wheat grass. Is this a crop you would like to see grown in Niklet County? If so, how would you encourage its use?"
I think it's an economic driver for Kernza. There's some, obviously there's some benefits for holding topsoil was part of the, part of the component in doing that. There are other techniques in doing that. So I think it's one of those things that we really probably need to leave to the operator because it may impact the resources that they're using, their equipment, and how that will impact overall. I think the argument, and Mr. Beatty makes a strong point on the issue of runoff and the rate is going to be an issue. We've had these discussions already going forward. So these will all play into that, but I'm not sure that there's one magic bullet in how we achieve those goals. That's my short answer. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Ms. Drantle.
Well, I found it a fascinating article. I live on what's called the Sand Prairie northwest of St. Peter where our soil is quite light and we have soil erosion problems, not from water, but from wind. And farming practices are designed around to keep that dirt from covering St. Peter. Last week, I listened to a presentation from Dr. Carrie Genas through the AMC's Environmental and Natural Resources meetings. She had some fascinating discussions on water management and soil management and it kind of all ties into this. I did send an email off to this kid, and he's probably not a kid, but in my world, he's a kid because he's younger than me, about how he got started in this and had some questions and I haven't heard back from him because I'm sure he's busy with, with regular farming. I find it fascinating. I was just, the whole four-foot root system, where 12-foot root system just was cool. I'm interested to hear more and see how it works and if it's economically viable. For most modern farming practices, it might not be economically viable, but for those of us that have special needs or areas that may be in CRP or out of production, it might be the thing to try. That's what I've got to add.
Thank you. And Mr. Beatty.
I'll follow up on that. Marie made some good points there too. There's also been a couple of really good articles out lately too about rotating of crops. Years ago, when, when we had lots of small farms and lots of people milked cows, there was always alfalfa or oats or something that was rotated in between the soybeans and the corn. And as we lost a lot of that animal population and it went to big operations rather than the small family farm, we lost some of that rotation of crops. And it's definitely proven that we need to rotate some crops. Now, the product we're talking about here is a little bit different. That, that's something that, if I remember right from what I read, four years, I think they're talking about it.
Yeah, it's a perennial.
Yeah, yeah. And then at some point, they have to start over with it again. But I think agriculture is also going to be looking at trying to replace some of the things back into the soil without always having to do it with nitrogen or, or some type of chemical on top of other things. It is healthy for the soil to still rotate some type of a legume or some type of a grass in there. So that, that's, yeah, it's, it's very interesting and it's going to be interesting to see where agriculture goes in the next few years, so.
Thank you. With the next question, I'm, I'm going to throw a curve at my partner over here. We're going to start with Mr. Beatty because this question is really aimed at him and then I think we'll go to Mr. Kemp and Ms. Drantle. "The county received about 4.1 million in CARES Act federal funding to help with costs related to the pandemic. Staff and the Board of Commissioners came up with a plan to spend those dollars including county, including on county expenses, rent and mortgage assistance, nonprofit assistance, and business grants. But a few had been in charge of the spending. How would you have prioritized the funds?"
And I'm very familiar with how these numbers break down. And there are definite ways you can spend the money. You can't just take a million dollars and put it in your general fund and have fun with it. Can't do that. There are definite ways to spend the money. And, and I've followed what the county has already done with it. I've agreed with where they're putting some money in different areas. I think a lot of those areas needed that. And there were some genuine costs that the county incurred before this CARES Act money came out. So that was fine to replace some of those dollars. I really like the idea of, and I know you're doing it as a grant-type system right now where somebody applies and there will be a grant. It would be nice if, of course, somebody has to make the choosing then, but there's so many small businesses that could just use a check right now. And, and I know certain things are being done for the schools too and even the hospital, but they're also getting some of that money from other sources too. So they've, they've already gotten some of that. I know that there's a deadline on it where if you don't use it, it goes back what you don't spend. Now that doesn't mean you have to spend every last dollar. I don't know if there's going to be another CARES Act coming up next year. I'm hopeful that there is because I don't think this pandemic is going to let up on our economy as quick as what some people think it will. And I think there's still going to be help needed for a lot of these businesses. I think we'll find out lots more in the next, all you got to do is listen to the news and, and more and more people are getting tested and of course, schools are back. We're going to play football now in the fall. We're going to have volleyball come back, so there's going to be a lot of contact again. We'll know more in a little while. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Denny Kemp.
Well, as, as currently seated on the board, most of those CARES Act dollars are things that we did discuss, are one of our issues about making sure, and again, this is a federal grant that comes to the county, but we also have to stand a federal audit on how those dollars are used. So as Mr. Beatty indicated, we can't just say, here's, here's the checkbook and make it happen. So I mean, that, that's the reality of it. We tried to put in place, we committed a million dollars to do supports for small businesses of that two, or of that 4.2 million dollars. And that's where we are right now in taking the application process for that and that still remains open. We used an outside contractor to make the assessment and the gathering of the data consistent and an organization that also has the ability to understand the federal auditing process. So we literally dot all the i's and cross the t's because we don't want to be put in a position to try and have to use general levy dollars to reimburse that if we did something wrong, which is a risk we all take in taking these things. Yes, I support all of the things we're doing. The other thing is part of doing some of the reimbursements in the public health areas and the things that we are planning to do, we're doing and the county is committed to do contact tracing locally as opposed to relying on a pool so that we are in the loop faster, so we can get to those patients faster and get those notifications. That's a conscious choice we made. So to have those dollars in place, to reimburse for those costs, but also recognizing that some of those dollars are probably going to be needed when we don't have a CARES Act and as Mr. Beatty indicated, I'm convinced that we will be doing this into another fiscal cycle. So we have to be management, we have to manage that also. I got my stop sign, I'm sorry.
Ms. Drantle, any comments?
Yes, I'm also aware of how we divvied up the 4.1 million and I find it really frustrating that the federal government tells us we have to spend this by December 15th or give it back. Frankly, this pandemic is not going to be over with by December 15th and it's foolish to toss it around and spend it that quickly. We do have a million dollars going to the Business Assistance Grants and Baker Tilly is the firm that's doing the management, the uploading and all of that. And I sat through their presentation last Thursday or Friday. My, lots going on, my days are running together. It's very cumbersome to do this application. I did one for a client, or we're prepping one right now, and we're uploading upwards of 65 pages of backup documentation. I think that's putting a burden on our businesses and I've been kind of vocal about that. I was also vocal about this CARES Act money with a conference call with Senator Klobuchar a week and a half ago, saying this is stupid to spend this money this quickly because sometimes it just feels like we're throwing money at things to spend it and that's not right. We need more time. And there was kind of a pause on the phone. Senator Klobuchar doesn't do Zoom calls, she does conference calls, so you really can't see facial expressions. But she did reach out back to me later and said, "I get your point." It'll be interesting to see who does and doesn't apply for a Business Assistance Grant. They're for small businesses, can get up to 5,000 if they have no employees. Businesses with employees can get up to 10,000. I, I think we'll be opening up similar to what Blueworth County did and reducing some of our criteria to get rid of the money and time. I, I don't think people are going to meet our criteria as fast as we had anticipated and I hope we're able to do that. More people need this money. I see this every day in my professional life. People are struggling on Main Street. And who'd have thought you'd ever have that sign up for me? I'll leave it at that, but if you've got questions, certainly if anybody has questions, we're open to answers. Thank you.
Thanks. And we're, we're going to stay with the budget now and we'll start with Marie Drantle and then go to Mr. Beatty and then Mr. Kemp. And actually going forward now, we've talked about the CARES. How, how, how do you process, how do you figure out how to balance the county residents' needs for services with the tax burden going forward?
What we have done, and I wasn't Budget Committee this year, so it's, it's probably, well, neither were you, I guess. We're not as familiar as the Budget Committee individuals. We project out what we think we're going to get versus what we think we need and adjust accordingly. We know that our appropriations from the federal government and the state government more than likely will be reduced. We have taken the position that there are some projects that we are putting off. There'll be road projects that are put off, there'll be staffing needs that won't be backfilled or filled. Our biggest expense in county government is, as our administrator phrased it today, human capital, staffing, wages, benefits, and the like. We need to get the best bang out of our employees that we can and still encourage them to do what they do as well as they can and compensate them fairly. We're going to have to look at it carefully, probably quarterly or oftener. I just think we're going to see a big hit to our reimbursements. I just think our local government aid, our county program aid is going to be drastically cut. And it's happened before and it'll happen again. We go in cycles and we have built reserves to weather some of those cycles. I'm confident if, if we're monitoring it carefully and we're monitoring at the federal and state level, that we can meet those challenges head-on.
Thank you.
I can follow up on that.
Mr. Beatty, go ahead.
Well, whether I was fortunate or unfortunate, I was on the county board in 2007, 8, 9, and 10 when the state was in the financial crisis. And I can assure you, we lost a lot of local government aid, whether it be the county, the city, whatever. Everybody was hurting and at that time, we dealt with a really tough budget situation. Now, one thing that at least I feel pretty proud of, that I stood up for, is I did not want us to lay off employees. So yes, there were some years where there weren't many increases in salary and we kind of really put a lock on things. And yes, once things got better, you needed to try and catch some of that up, which is okay too, but I fully anticipate, if I can quote it right, I believe the state's looking at at least 2.5 billion deficit in 2021 and 4.7 in the next biennium. And, and if this pandemic keeps hitting businesses the way it is, that can only grow. I don't look for that going away anytime quick. So I think we have to learn how to, to live with a little bit different system right now. Unfortunately with the pandemic, we definitely have a couple departments at the county that really need to have a lot of services provided. It's as simple as that. And, and I don't want to see the services decrease. I want to see us be able to work as efficiently as possible and, and try not to put a huge tax burden on everybody because that doesn't solve the problem either. We have to be very efficient with our funds at this point.
Thank you. Denny Kemp.
I don't know that there's much more than I can say that hasn't already been said. I think we're all in agreement here that we have to be as fiscally mindful as we possibly can. There are external forces that mandate a services, but also tell us what our reimbursements are. So then it's incumbent upon the local county boards to make up the difference or find a way to implement those requirements and work within those dollars. And we are always behind the curve. So that's why we've worked and my predecessors and also the boards that I, the board that I've worked with, we've continued to I've worked with, we've continued to look at the fiscal bottom line, making sure that we don't overextend and prudently manage our bonding dollars and also prudently managing our fiscal reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. You've all brought up broadband in the past, and that's what we're going to talk about next. Starting with Mr. Kemp and then going to, um, Ms. Drantl and Mr. Beatty. In a September 7th article, the Mankato Free Press reported that as many as 17% of Nicola County households do not have access to appropriate, to, um, accent. Let me start that sentence again.
Okay.
In a September 7th article, the Mankato Free Press reported that as many as 17% of Nicola County households do not have access to appropriate broadband internet. This is especially problematic now with children attending school from home and employees working from home. Two parts. First, how can the county address this urgency in the near term? And second part, how would you address it in the long term? And once again, it's Denny Kemp followed by Ms. Drantl and then Mr. Beatty.
In the short term, it's an issue of finding the competitive providers that are already in place to provide the greater bandwidth that's available. And that, we have coverage in just about all of the county, but the border to border standard that's established by the state, we don't meet that standard. So that's where that deficiency number comes in. We run into that. The population centers get the highest speed data because the cost to put that technology in place is less expensive because there are more people per mile of physical plant to put in. When we look at the greater county outside of most of our corporate limits, we have a density of one to, I think 2. something was the number. I'm, I'm running this one off the top of my head. 2.7 potential customers per mile of physical plant. That becomes very cost prohibitive in doing that. The argument there becomes, um, what technologies we, do we do to help make that happen? So that's kind of that going forward piece is trying to accomplish, uh, providing certainly less restriction on providers to get their equipment in place to provide either a Wi-Fi signal. There is an argument and, and Mr. Beatty brought up earlier on the issue of satellite technologies. The problem we run with the current satellite technologies is a lot of the security systems that we run on an internet backbone do not function well in that environment because there's too much lag time. Cause when you're talking on that dish in your backyard and now I'm going into a technical spiel and she's going to throw the sign at me here. But it's, uh, the reality of it is that conversation that you're having electronically has to travel approximately 23,000 miles each way. And so when that happens, the technology because of that latency doesn't make as, as efficient. It's not like watching or taking a stream from a, um, for your Netflix show. So there's, there needs to be a shorter span and fiber optics are the tie-in to a lot of these technologies, which we don't have a lot in the ground in greater Nicola County. We do in most of our, uh, small subdivisions and our community subdivision, there goes the stop sign, I have to shut up, sorry.
Well, I live in the dead zone. I'm one of those households that's underserved. I am fortunate, I can afford satellite, but it gets expensive over time and there's data limits. In, in the short term, it's, it's Nicola County received a broadband grant or a study from the Blandon Foundation to study our broadband needs in Nicola County, a matching grant, and we just finished part of that process. Again, it's to expand those bandwidths in the short term. Hopefully with these CARES dollars and some of these COVID dollars from both the school district, the city and the county, we're able to fund hotspots for kids so they can work at home. That's the short term, but that is just a short term. Long-term, we found out last week, those of us that live in the dead zone along the bluffs are probably screwed. Between trees and in, inaccessibility to lay wire, it, it's going to be difficult. Again, and it's going to come back to providers and what they're willing to offer once a system is built. And it'll be a competitive system. More than likely, we'll have as many as five different providers within Nicola County. Denny's the tech guru on this. It was kind of over my head when I found out I'd stay in the dead zone. It wasn't a happy conversation.
No, I understand.
Unfortunately, a lot of it's going to get down to what people can afford.
Yeah.
And that's the sad reality. It's expensive, there's data limits. I, I can work at home, but I get that lag time when I'm, when I'm logging in on a virtual network and I get kicked off. So we're hoping for great things in the future and we'll see where it leads. The competitive process might make it better. I, I don't know though. I have my doubts.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I don't, but I, I think this is an important issue we need to talk about. In the reality of it is, it is still economics that are the private organizations that are doing this, they have to have a return on investment. The rough cost we got to putting fiber to every home in greater Nicola County average, it's about just short of $20 million to do. And so, and that's just putting the equipment in. That doesn't deal with capturing the service and carrying that data to someplace else. So those are real costs. So that works out too. I think based on the estimate we had was, uh, it was just about $9,000 a household.
That was a sage of our own.
It was pretty close. It was, it was, it was really into that area. So I, and then that's assuming that from a marketing standpoint, the people that now have that technology don't want to, don't want to pay any more than their brethren in the greater cities.
Sure.
And so then that really skews that number. And then the sales drop off. So then their potential buyership drops out even further. So we may have to, and that's what we've been looking for, is grant opportunities to incent the private providers to be a part of that. And I'm sorry, I jumped into his time.
Let's let, um, Mr. Beatty comment.
These two have covered a lot of it really well, but I do want to add one thing. I, just fairly recently, I was asked to, uh, to do a letter of support for broadband for, uh, New Ulm Telecom for a grant. I haven't heard if they've gotten that grant yet, but they're, they're one of the ones pursuing to want to reach out. And when you talk about areas of the county, obviously where I am, yeah, you get out to an area where, and if you want to see how things can fail, unless you guys can tell me different, we know what happened in, um, Sibley County.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's pretty much, uh, not old news, but it's always news. And it, it was just so costly that things just couldn't quite happen. And, and that's why this is going to hold up. Now, I can give you all kinds of good reasons too, why we need it, especially with kids out of school. And I'll bring up farming again. Farming is not what it was 50 years ago. I mean, they need this service also. And, and so there's a lot of good reasons for it, but once again, it's the dollar. And I, I, I don't have the real quick answer and I don't think any of us in the, in the room do. I do hear, uh, once again, when I talked about satellites, there are people that feel that that's definitely the future.
Yep.
How far is the future away?
You're right.
And who knows? May, maybe broadband gets put in and a year later, all of a sudden new technology comes and gosh, we just spent a lot of money and now, whatever. But that's, that's where we're going. I think we all kind of agree on all of this too.
It is the most frustrating issue.
It is.
Because we can't do anything about it. We're at the mercy of the market.
Right.
Well, and if our kids are going to end up educating from home for any extended period of time, you know, we can, we can put up with this home learning for a while, but with, with the grandkids that I have, I feel too that I don't want to lose face-to-face education. You know, cause I think they're, they are missing something there. And, and so it's one thing to have to do it at home for a while, but I hope this is not going to be a, a two-year cycle of some type, so.
Thank you all. Let's, um, move on a little bit here. The next question's going to concern environment and we will start with, um, Ms. Drantl and then go to Mr. Kemp and Mr. Tell me how I messed up again. Yes.
Lynn, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If a certain item doesn't come up in one of your questions at some point tonight, could I or Jenny or Marie bring it up and just let us have a little discussion on it? Cause I think there's a couple topics that we could have a pretty good discussion on.
Actually, I was planning on at some point asking, what question do you wish I asked? So maybe that would cover it?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe, you know, we'll see if whatever it is you want to talk about comes up. Oh, I, I think we are on Ms. Drantl first. Hey?
Six.
Number six. Okay. Then we'll start with Mr. Beatty and Mr. Kemp and Ms. Drantl. And, uh, let's see, the question. What do you see as our top environmental issue and how would you like to see it addressed?
Water. I already touched on this before, water. And it's going to continue to be an issue in Nicola County because we are so rural and we have so much agriculture and, um, I, I don't want to. More and more talk is, is, is coming out now, which kind of amazes me because I think 12 years ago, Minnesota River Board, a couple of us said something about, well, it's about flow rate. It's not about the volume, it's how fast we're pushing it to the rivers and streams. And now all of a sudden, that's become a hot item. And, and I really think that, and, and residents of the cities want help, there's no doubt about it. So I really think we have to start looking at, how do we just hold back the flow of water? And maybe that means we get to the point where we have to have holding areas. And we top them off with a pipe and they don't start going down into the river until we've at least held back a certain amount. This is quite the year to talk about this because where I live, I've had two six-inch rains, a five, a four, a three and a two. Now that's way more rain than we should get. We, we just shouldn't get that much, but we did. And so we're experiencing a, a lot of trouble with that. And I'll tell you right now, when those ditches fill up and that water flows, it flows fast. And that's what carries all the sediment down into the Minnesota River or into creeks, streams, whatever. It, wherever it can go, it goes fast. And, and I think that's something that, uh, and I'll use the word environment, environmentalist, but people want to see us do something good for our rivers. And I don't want it all to fall on the backs of the farmers because it's not all their responsibility to fix this, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp.
Water is clearly one of our ongoing issues. Having come from an urban environment, I didn't realize the, really the secondary economy, which is rural farming is certainly in Nicola County because of the water retention, the drainage systems and all of those components. Also, as Mr. Beatty indicated, we've had some huge, huge rainfalls that also represent dollars. We've had keister slew with a big chunk of County Road 12 underwater for now it's two years, it's going to be three years. And we're now putting in place the resources to, to elevate that. That's three and a half million dollars that we didn't know we were going to have to spend originally. Fortunately, there were some other sources to help fund that, but still it is taxpayer dollars. County Road 14, not too far from your home. We've had some major issues with that and, um, to the point where we're going to have to close that this winter, uh, again, because of water, natural rainfall has loosened the hillsides and we're going to have to do some fixes there.
County 21, right.
County 21 twice now, we've had two failures, yes.
I don't.
Yep.
I don't know, there, that's going to be a scary spot to put a bunch of rock in there and have two lanes functioning on that road and that road could fall into the river anytime.
And, well, and all along there, that isn't just the one spot. I, I, we recognize that. So we have to act to, to keep that as stable as we can. So again, those waters, but there again, it's the volume of water that's leaving. There's also a huge cost to going into some form of retention system. Municipals, municipalities have only been doing that for a fairly short time. Now, when you see new developments in communities made, there are retention systems built in. That wasn't always the case. So it's slowly migrating to that, but we have issues where some of our watershed runs right through municipalities and I have to stop, I'm sorry.
Ree Drantl.
I will continue the water theme. Because water management, um, water retention, protecting the quality of the water we have available for drinking and protecting the availability of water. We, our weather cycles and we're in a wet cycle, whether it be global warming or, or other man-made factors, but at some point we'll swing like California or the West Coast to a dry cycle and have just the opposite. So we need to prepare for that also. From an environmental perspective and our, and our ag users, our ag residents sometimes take the hit because they're using too many chemicals, whether it be herbicides or fertilizers. And, and I don't think the general public realizes that they don't use them nilly willy. They're expensive, um, they are harmful to the environment and they're harmful to themselves. It's a prudent use of those chemicals. The holding pond thing, yeah. It's going to be our future, no doubt. We've had some success with holding ponds on a couple of systems. The Seven Mile Creek watershed just went through a multimillion dollar restructure within the last 10 years. And it's been interesting to see some of the data that's coming out of that. When I was listening to Dr. Jennings last week, her, her historical perspective on the Blue Earth River and, um, is it the Watanwan that comes in to the Minnesota? And how the glaciers formed all of this and why it's sloughing and, and really the man-made factors aren't as important as the way the glaciers left it, but we still need to learn to manage those man-made factors. I've lived within two blocks of the Minnesota River for 59 years. I've been through way too many hundred-year flood events. So we need to learn to manage that water and hold some of that back. It's, it's going to be muddy no matter what we do, just because of the soils upriver. So, and what's her name is holding the thing about up, so we'll quit and say water.
Thank you. We're, the, the next question, we're going to start with Ree Drantl, then go to, um, Mr. Beatty and then Mr. Kemp. And let's, let's just stay with, um, county roads. County Road 12, it's been submerged, uh, two going on three years now. How would you like to see that problem resolved? And are there any other infrastructure problems that you would like to tackle?
Two and a half years ago, I was on my way to New Ulm for a public health board meeting and drove through County Road 12 and drove through water. And I got to the other side, took a picture and texted it to our public works director and says, said, we need to close that road now. And it hasn't been open since.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we've tended to build infrastructure in places that may not have been prudent to build it. And County Road 12 might be a perfect example. I can't believe our forefathers did County Road 21. I mean, what holds that road along that bluff? Seriously? Today in, in the modern world, that wouldn't happen, but in County Roads 12's issues are somewhat exacerbated by modern drainage technologies and the fact that we can't just dump that water over onto somebody else. It is in stage one now of its reconstruction. It has been widened. If you have the chance to go to Mathiowitz Construction's website, you can see videos on what they're doing. I was going to drive up there last night, but we had a little excitement in my family, so I didn't get there, so I didn't get to see it. It will get wider, it will get taller. And hopefully we'll never have to do it again. There are roads in other counties with similar circumstances. I came back from. I came back from the lake last night and we have a road over in Leesur County with the same problem. Infrastructure takes money and it takes regular maintenance, and we need to stay with those schedules. So I'll quit at that because this is a whole other day's conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty, County Route 12 and other infrastructure projects?
Only two minutes, I guess. Well, I was not on the board when all the excitement with County 12 started going, but I have some strong feelings on it and some of it's how it's handled. I can tell you right now, that slough or wetland or whatever you want to call it there does not have an outlet, okay? And there's been plenty of agricultural private tile run into it, which is fully legal. There's nothing wrong with that, they can do that. And then, of course, we've had lots more rain the last few years, too. Now, I don't know how much was really pushed with this, but I believe that that slough needs an outlet. And that has to be an outlet that goes to a ditch. And when it goes to a ditch, now the people who have private tile going into it have to pay an outlet fee because now that they're going to use a county system. And people, wherever the ditch is that you run it into, people downstream don't want that water, extra water either. So it's always a problem. But I still think that should have been topped off. Now, Marie used the word hopefully, and I hope you're right on hopefully. And I know I've talked with Seth about that, too, but without an outlet in there, just building that road up, I'm not 100% convinced with all the tiling that we still do in agriculture, which is fully legal, that water level's just going to keep going up, especially if we get the kind of rains that we've had. We get two more years of rains like we've had this, you'll be surprised at how high that slough gets. I believe it needs an outlet. And I think I would have pushed really hard for that if I would have been on the board. I might not have gotten anyplace because you need to deal with the DNR with that. They're going to have, they're going to have a big part of that discussion.
As is the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah. So, do I have to quit already? 15 seconds? Okay, I'll talk about other roads in another question.
Okay. Jenny Kemp?
Yes and yes to my predecessors on this one. The reality of it is, the design feature as has been for the reelevation, it will not top the road. It's going to find its own natural outlet and it's going to create its own outlet if we have an ongoing elevation. So will the, will the water top the road again? Highly doubtful. But will there be an unplanned egress of the water from that slough? Highly likely if we continue on in the direction we are. So we have not wasted those dollars, but we suffered, when we went through this, seeking alternatives to doing what we're doing now, the adjacent property owners were less than reticent to even give us access to a ditch. The DNR was abysmal in dealing with and trying to find those things. So we could only do the thing that was most prudent to give people the health and safety access they needed because fire service and all these other resources need to be as available as we can to that area.
Jenny, if I can just comment on that, too. And I, and I heard lots of people saying that, "Man, we got to get this road back open." You know, Cortland Fire wanted it open.
Yep.
And all those services, which is fine. But I also want to remind people that where I live out there, the Minnesota River Bridge was down for two years, and both of those years, the Brown County Road from the Boisman Bridge going into town was underwater.
Yep.
So where I live, if I needed emergency service from New Ulm, it would have taken them, they would have had to go to Cortland,
Yep.
cross the river and come back. So the service time there would have been way longer because you can get around 12. Might have to go on gravel roads, but you can get around 12. And so that's just a point that I wanted to make. Now, thank goodness, we have things hopefully done over there, the new bridge over the river and stuff will be there for a long time.
Well, as long as 21 stays and gives us an approach to it.
Right.
That's the other piece of that, right?
Let's, let's kind of move on.
I'm sorry. It's an ongoing issue and where we have the destabilization along 21, for those that aren't familiar with that end of the county, it runs, basically follows the course of the Minnesota River. And so when the Minnesota River, for those of you that observe that, goes up and goes down rather quickly when we have upstream events, and that also then starts creating a problem where we have big chunks of that roadside or that road shoulder sloughing back down into the river. And there, that's the issue we're running into right now. So when we have these big tidal surge events is when we start losing a lot of that.
There's history that, that almost that whole road went into the river.
Let's move on.
Sorry. We can, she's waving out there, I'm sorry. Thought you were trying to land a plane there.
Okay. And Mr. Kemp, you're going to get to speak again first.
Oh, goodie, for a minute.
And then, let me, let me think. Oh, oh, wait a minute, I got that wrong, didn't I? Okay. All right, Mr. Kemp, Ms. Drantle, and then Mr. Beatty. You need a question. This concerns social justice. In light of the racial unrest we have experienced statewide this summer, in what areas would you review existing county policy to assure social justice and equity for all? So, Mr. Kemp?
There are lots of areas when we look at those things, Health and Human Services and the compliance that we have to do with that. For those that have issues directly with law enforcement, we have an elected chair for that specific purpose. So there is someone that can answer to those types of questions. The board itself, we very, we rarely promulgate any rules that regard those types of events because it's not in our wheelhouse to do. The state legislature requires that to be done by the sheriff, and the legislature, for the most part, reserves its own rights with regard to promulgating rules that are enforced by law enforcement in that regard. I think the other part where we have impact is also supporting the resources to deal with our criminal justice system as we have in the county. Probation is a factor that we're a part of and have continued to work in finding a more supportive and more consistent model throughout of all of our criminal element or those that are adjudicated in the, in the system, they're not necessarily criminal. And then also providing equity for crime victims. We've also supported those dollars and those programs so that we have a crime victims advocate in the county for individuals that are victimized for whatever process or whatever item that they've been victimized on, whether it's a social victimization, whether it's something else, they're there to help provide those supports. So I think overall, we do a very good job in this county to provide the resources to both the victims and the offenders in the criminal justice side and providing equitable... We're constantly seeking in Health and Human Services area, new translators, trying to find someone that can provide those supports and speak the language of those in need. So those, again, are very important elements that we continue to try to strive to do.
Thank you. Ms. Drantle?
Last fall, and I'm going to go back, our friends at the Blandon Foundation provided a grant for a program called Leading Ethnically Diverse Communities. And I was a member of that through, through March when COVID hit. And one of the things that it brought together, a diverse group of people to talk about cultures and how people view things and how people react to things. And I learned a lot about myself through this training. I learned to look at things differently from different perspectives. We at Nicola County do a fairly good job. All of us can always do better. We need to be sensitive to everyone. We, we need to work on it. That's what I'm going to say at this point. We really need to, to work on how we think about things, whether it be from a Health and Human Services perspective or even a criminal justice perspective. And it needs to be an ongoing educational thing for staff, for board, for everyone. Our, our training starts back up here remotely. What I have found with this group of people, though, is over the course of the summer, when we weren't meeting in our formal training or our informal training or however they did it, we reached out to, we reached out to each other because we needed each other. And it was really nice to hear different perspectives as the world was kind of falling apart. I enjoyed that and I hope my cohorts in that group enjoyed my perspective also, so.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
I don't have a lot to add to that, but I'm going to, just a couple of comments. And I'm pretty sure this committee still meets, there's still a criminal justice committee, which has been going on for quite a while. I know previous Commissioner Stenson was a really big believer in the Criminal Justice Committee. And a lot of good discussions can take place there. They're not always real productive, from what I remember, but at least you could get a good discussion going on things. And just kind of going from there over to what Marie was saying, our cities, our schools are just getting more diversity in them. Whether we like it or not is immaterial, you know? It's happening and it's going to continue to happen. That's our world, that's how it's changing. And we need to learn how to accept that change. There's always going to be some that won't. They just won't. But I think those are the ones we need to work with and encourage them to let this change happen. Obviously, some of the events in Minneapolis doesn't help how we, it makes us look at it maybe a little bit harder, but it's unfortunate that it took that to shake the world up, basically. So there will be some changes. I, all we can do is, like you were saying, let's, let's hope for everybody to remember that we're supposed to be a caring society and care for all people.
You know, my perspective was, in order to grow, we need to learn.
Yep.
And in order to learn, we need to grow.
Thank you.
She goes again.
Just, just adding on to that. Let me think, how are we doing here? It's, again, Ms. Drantle, Mr. Kemp, and Mr. Beatty. Did I get that right?
Are you on question nine?
I'm making it up as I go along. Actually, yes. Yes, yes, number nine. Yeah. I did not make up this next question. But along those lines, we had a person from the community specifically wanting this question to go to the board versus some other level of government. And this person asked, "Should skin color as opposed to diversity of thought be a determining factor in policies or initiatives advanced by our governmental organizations?" Should skin color as opposed to diversity of thought be a determining factor in policies and initiatives advanced by our governmental organizations?
I'm going to say no because I think diversity of thought is equally important. And sometimes our ethnic background forms our diversity of thought, but we need to think broader and we need to think, we need to think broader and the broader implications of our actions. And skin color will drive some of those actions and some of those thoughts, but we, we still need to be open-minded with that, with that thought process.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Kemp?
Short answer is no, it shouldn't make any difference. The, the reality of it is, and to be perfectly honest, from a, when we're, when we're focusing on the issue of board, we address policy and not color. That is, so there's that whole concept of justice should be blind, so should we in that regard. We're making choices and making determinations based on the best interests of the situation. And, and many times, we don't see the people we impact. We are making policies and others are doing that. So I don't think that's a, I think that's a non-starter for me in that regard because we, we don't make those, we don't make our decisions based on that.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
Agree with both of them on what they've already said. This, this country of ours needs to start seeing colors. They just have to quit seeing it. We're all, we're all citizens, we're all Americans. And we should just have a little bit more interest in caring for the safety and welfare of everybody rather than looking at colors, so.
Thank you.
That's all.
Let me see, where are we? Childcare. And we will start with Mr. Beatty, then Mr. Kemp, and Ms. Drantle. The CARES Act has provided additional funding for childcare in Nicola County. In what ways can the county continue to support childcare once these funds are gone?
You want me to start on that?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if the county has anything budgeted right now to try and help childcare when the CARES money is gone. I mean, that's obviously helping, helping quite a few people with that. I know when I was on the board, actually, when our new building was being built, and that goes back quite a few years, and now probably that second, second level, that big room is probably filled with something else, but I thought, gee, wouldn't that be a good daycare? But I don't, I don't know that the county wants to get into daycare providing either, but if there's a way that they can help support them, and there's, there's probably different ways to do that, it doesn't always have to be financial. You know, just through public health providers and things like that, things can be helped. Maybe some of the licensing fees, I don't know quite what has happened with licensing fees for daycare providers in the, in the county and stuff, but there are some different ways that you can deal with that. This is another issue that our society has obviously changed so much. Daycare is needed because we either have two parents who are working or we have single parents that need to work. And, and, you know, if, if they're going to be able to support themselves at all, they have to have some type of service for the, for the children. I do know that we have, certainly in Minnesota, we have full, full-day kindergarten, and, and I think there's going to be a big push for full-time preschool at some point, that the state is going to probably get involved and fund that. So I, I still like the idea of the family unit taking care of kids, don't get me wrong there, I really like that, but it's not always feasible either.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp?
A mixed bag. The CARES Act was really designed to be a bridge when we had a shortfall of resources and there isn't a long-term plan, which we discussed earlier in this, that some of these things, we don't know what all of our social mores are going to look like when we're two years out from this. They may be completely different and I think we need to be keenly aware of that and we are going to have to prioritize our dollars as county commissioners as we always have. Are there going to be ways that we can help that may not mean just dollars? Maybe. But the other part of this, and we all talk about this, well, the state is going to fund this, the state is going to do this. The reality of it is, it's all our tax dollars. The state doesn't make money any differently than we do as far as, and we're their enforcer, we're the ones that come out and require those taxes to be paid. We're the ones that collect the taxes for the school districts and for all of the other organizations for the cities that they live in. So there's a lot of moving parts to doing all this. But again, I support the concept, but we are a really, really diverse county because our population base in the townships is getting smaller, it's not getting bigger. And so it's trying to find where can we put the most bang for our It's not getting bigger. And so it's trying to find where can we put the most bang for our buck to benefit the largest number of people. Short answer.
Thank you. Ms. Drantle?
Well, as other conversations went through this evening, I'm gonna go ditto. Um, the, the all-day preschool thing, that just floors me. Those kids need to be kids. They don't need to be learning all the time. They need to play and run around and get dirty and do all that fun stuff. Um, currently, um, I believe through Health and Human Services and Public Health, we administer the licensing fees for home daycares and centers in, in Niklet County and do most of the inspection work. Um, and I do believe they hold some training sessions also as part of their licensing requirements. And there is a fee to that. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars. That, that's a detail down here, and, um, at the moment, I'm a little brain-dead. It's a tough issue. Um, we have lost some home daycares with COVID, primarily because they were afraid to expose children or be exposed by children whose parents might, may or may not have been exposed. What Cassie told us last week at our board workshop is that we aren't getting people applying for these daycare assistance grants, which we all kind, we're, we're not sure if they didn't know about it, or, or they didn't need it. So i- it's kind of a, kind of an influx thing at this point, and, and I'm not sure what the answer is. But daycare is a pri- is going to be a priority in the future, I think probably as our family sizes start to grow again. I, I just, I don't know what the answer is at this point.
Thank you. Um, next to the last question. Uh, and we'll start with Ms. Drantle and go to Denny Kemp, and then Mr. Beatty. Does the county have a role in increasing access to mental health services, especially in this time of stress for many? How would you address that?
Um, the county does have a role in accessing, and we have flipped two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward emergency, um, access to mental health counseling with our CARES dollars. I, I don't think we can spend it by December fifteenth, but the money is out there and the resources have been contracted. Um, and the, within social services, our mental health professionals are, are sliding people to these practitioners. Um, a lot of that has went to remote access through COVID. Again, as we've said earlier, we're gonna need these services into 2021 and 2022. This whole situation is, is playing head games with all of us, and we all need help. And, and it's only going to get more needed as time passes. So, yes, we have an increasing role. We're, we're generating money toward it. Um, we did a fairly large shift to our providers in the last two years, and from reports from both users, providers, and our staff, it's went well.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp?
I have to, I have to agree with Marie on this, but then also beyond that, that also speaks to where we're going as a society, because the big, one of the biggest influxes we're seeing, and having a much higher compliance rate with those that are seeking mental health services is telemedicine, which also is very much reliant on the technologies that are available. So, again, a lot of these issues weave each other together to, to be efficient and to get those services to our greater Minnesota, not just our county, but greater Minnesota, because we can't, we don't have enough of the psych professionals readily available within our region. So we have to seek other ways to get them, because not all of our, um, healthcare prof- or mental healthcare professionals can do scripting. So, and can't provide scripts for medication. So then we have to rely on psychiatrists and things that we're going through telemedicine providers to get that happen. And if without that, we wouldn't be able to assist some of those folks. So, again, we are putting dollars there. We're keenly aware of the need. We know there's gonna be a greater need. And so, again, that's why we're trying to be as conservative as we can with some of the dollars we're spending now, because as Marie indicated, we're gonna be doing this much longer after we finally do have, or if we ever do have, a inoculation for COVID.
Thank you. And Mr. Beatty?
I don't have a lot to add to that, uh, following what they said, but I, just a comment on telemedicine. Services by telemedicine now are getting to be, uh, something that's used quite a bit. It's not just for mental health. Uh, and, uh, my wife is involved in, in medicine, and Debbie and I just had a conversation the other day on it, and I, I expressed my concerns that, for now, telemedicine is something that's ne- necessary, and it's there, but I don't wanna see physicians lose sight of the face-to-face touching a patient, seeing a patient. You know, my training as a veterinarian was my patients couldn't talk. So my, my physical exam skills were honed very, very acutely. And, and I just don't wanna see that, a physician in the room with you, being able to, and don't always sit in front of a computer while you're talking to your patient either. I mean, look at your patient. And so I, I just don't wanna see that go away. I don't want everything to start going to telemedicine, because I don't think that's the overall answer to this. It's, it's a necessity right now, and maybe it can be modified in the future, but, but let's not make it the only way we can see a doctor. Let's not do it that way. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I, can I interject? I did, I did physical therapy via computer website two years ago with a balance specialist in Burnsville when I had a vertigo problem. And I couldn't drive to Burnsville for therapy, because I could barely walk across the street. And I tell you, it was pretty slick.
Yeah.
Really slick.
There, there are definitely ways and, and things that can be done good that way, but, uh, you know, we, we still need, we still need that contact.
Yep. And, and once we got all done, we had a follow-up appointment.
Yep.
With the therapist, and, and, but it was pretty slick. I mean, I, like I said, I could barely walk across the street, let alone drive to Burnsville every day. So.
Interesting.
The, the reality of it is, though, that we, transit becomes an issue for some of our folks, trying to find all of those things, and so anything that gets them seen at least evaluated is in the best interest of the health and safety of our citizens. So I, I think it's, it's not one answer for any of this. And, and I think that's what we've really talked about here all, all the way through the evening, is been that's our common theme. There's not one way to fix this, and there's no absolutes.
Okay. Um, thank you. As, as I said, that was the next to the last question, and we're, for the last one, and we'll start with, hmm, where am I? Ms. Drantle, then Mr. Beatty, and Mr. Kemp. And this is the question you asked for before. What question do you wish we'd asked?
Well, we've really not talked about transit.
Okay.
Um, Niklet County, uh, Blueworth County, and Lee Sauer County entered into a joint transit agreement two years ago, um, and then we contracted with Vine for transit systems in our three-county area. Um, the transit systems have changed a lot from the beginning. At first, it was a route system, which I'm not sure why they thought it was gonna work, but they did. And now we've went to a modified dial-a-ride, um, with a fixed fee, three dollars. Just about anywhere in Niklet, Blueworth, or Lee Sauer County will get you to where you need to go. Um, it's changing daily. Our ridership, though, is increasing, so it is nice to see. Um, MnDOT now has the grand plan that it's going to morph all of these transit systems into one large one, which I'm not sure why they didn't do to begin with, but that's a whole other tangent. Um, it feels like we've wasted a lot of money on transit to get to this point, but thankfully, people are starting to use it. Um, that would be the one thing we haven't talked about at this point.
Okay. Mr. Beatty, what would you, what do you wish we'd talked about?
I've got a couple of things, but I'll only start with one. Of course, the 2020 census is occurring at this point, which means that once it's in, redistricting of, of voting areas will be looked at. I was on the board in 2010 when we, when we looked at it at that time. As it stands right now in the county, St. Peter's divided into, North Mankato is divided almost directly into, the fifth district, though, has a couple little precincts in North Mankato that North Mankato didn't wanna give up in 2010. I feel extremely strong that there has to be one district where somebody outside of the city limits of the two biggest cities has to live. You know, right now, it's possible with those little precincts in North Mankato, all five commissioners could live within the city limits of the two biggest cities. And I don't, I don't think that should occur for all the rural area that we have. And I'm, and I know that we have to juggle things around. I'm, I'm sure that as the two bigger cities grow, we're probably gonna have to juggle around a township or two and try and keep it to one side. But I, I think it's really important to kind of, almost, you know, there's different ways to look at it. Somebody from St. Peter could move out to Niklet and, you know, still basically be a Tony or whatever, you know? But I really would like it so that it looks like we can always have a rural commissioner in Niklet County. So that, that's just one thing.
You just got flagged.
And I got flagged. That's why I'm looking.
Flag on the flag.
That's why I'm looking at Denny. So, I can't see her, but, so. But I probably have one more, but I'll let Denny throw one out there.
Um, there's, there are several issues that I, I think are important to all of us, and that is, right now, at this moment, it's voting. Voting is a huge issue for everybody. It's, even voting has become politicized. And I want to go on record, having researched it very well and had worked hard at trying to understand our voting process and how it's administered in this county, it's really, really nearly impossible to cheat. Whether you're sending it in by mail, whether you're sending, or whether you're coming into the courthouse to vote, or whether you're voting on Election Day, it's not going to happen. We're going to have fair and reliable counts. Certain things have changed in regard to the fact that we won't necessarily know the total vote count come, uh, election night, but because of the agreements about how the mail ballots can come in, and they are still available to be opened, uh, within seven days of the election, there's a little delay in our canvassing, but it's going to be happen, and you're, it's going to happen, and you're gonna have a fair and honest count. So I think that's really important to know. And again, I would parrot what, uh, my esteemed colleague has indicated. On the issue of census is still important. It's, has an economic impact on everyone in this county. If we know who you are, it has an impact on how federal dollars are dispersed to the state and how those dollars are dispersed to the local units of government. It's a big deal, and we live with that choice for a very, very long time. So, especially in, in government, uh, ten years is a very, very long time. So when we talk about this 2020 census, I'm running out of time, and we aren't gonna have that redetermination until probably two years later. I think it's usually a two-year lag before we, we'd have redetermination in 2022. So, yes, those are, those are important issues.
Thank you. Um, and we've been through a lot of issues. It's time for some closing remarks, and you, each of you have two minutes, and we'll start in the opposite direction we started. Uh, and we'll, with Bruce Beatty in District Five, Denny Kemp, District Three, and Marie Drantle, District One.
Can we have one more question before we jump to that? You know, one thing we haven't really talked about a whole lot tonight is the pandemic in general. We've talked about effects of it, but we actually haven't really talked that much about the virus itself and what's going on. I've been following the county board meetings, and I've been listening to Cassie give updates. And if, if I heard right, uh, she spoke at one time saying that there was like a four-day delay on test results. And she was talking about contact tracing at the time. Now, with my background, if there's a four-day delay on test results, contact tracing is pretty much irrelevant. It makes, it really doesn't make any sense, because those fingers have reached out so far already that, uh, it, it just doesn't make sense. Now, until we get quicker turnaround, and there can be some quicker turnaround. Uh, I know what, what Debbie tells me over in New Ulm, that some of their tests can come back pretty quick, some don't. I, I actually think the, if you send the test to the Minnesota Department of Health, that seems to be slower than most of the other sources that are out there. So, uh, not that the, the county has a, a big say in how to do that, other than maybe send tests that, uh, public health might be doing to a better, a better test site. But, uh, my, it's just a comment I wanted to make. The contact tracing is, doesn't give you a whole lot of good answers if you're going on four-day delay. And I think even in the schools, it was a pretty lengthy delay, but.
I, I believe they're all going to Mayo for, for testing and results.
Okay.
Now they are.
Now they are, yeah.
And what kind of a turnaround is there now? Are they getting in today?
Less than, less than 24 hours in most cases. If they're in clinic environments, they're, uh, they're doing the high-speed test, and they're having that within thirty, or, within four hours. So it, again, it depends upon the, the, the diagnosis on entry. So it, it moves around a little bit. I'm sorry.
Let's, let's, let's move to, um.
Okay.
You wanna get this done now, then?
Denny Kemp, you're next.
What was the question again, Lynn? I, I.
Um, it's, you get to give us two minutes of any closing remarks you have.
I am proud to serve my constituency. I'm proud to serve our county. But I would encourage, regardless of your desires for whoever sits in any of these seats, get out and vote. It's important. It's a big deal. It has a huge impact on the decisions that are made for us going forward. Regardless of your stripe, you gotta get out and vote. That's all I have to say. It's really that important to me.
Thank you. And Marie Drantle?
Um, in closing, I'm gonna echo Denny's comments. I am humbled to serve as a Niklet County Commissioner. I, I don't care how many times we go through this. The introvert in me finds it just extremely humbling. And yes, we all need to vote. It is our responsibility to vote and be informed on the issues and decisions. Having a brain fart. Um. Ask questions of your elected leaders. I don't care what level. Reach out. We're here to hear. We're here to listen. We're here to answer. If we don't know the answer, we can find the answer. I had to turn down a date night, tonight, to go look at a drainage ditch. I'll be doing that tomorrow night. It's an exciting life I lead when I do the drainage ditch, too, on Sunday nights. So, but, but ask questions. The only way we learn, whether at our level as an elected, or as, as a voter, or as a constituent or a resident, is to ask questions. Never stop learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I use up my closing one on?
I, I, I believe you did.
On the path down.
Um, I, I want to, um, thank all of our candidates here tonight. Marie Drantle for District One, Denny Kemp for District Three, and Bruce Beatty for District Five. Uh, I also want to thank our cosponsors, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce, the St. Peter Herald, and our videographer, who's been, um, a great, great guy. Um, I wanna thank my co-league members, Pat Con, Victoria Steinhaus, and Mary Ann Scharf. This will be recorded and aired on St. Peter Public Access TV, St. Peter's YouTube channel, KTV in Mankato, as well as the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, which is located at www dot vote four-one-one numbers, um, vote four-one-one dot org, and on our league Facebook page. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.